Andrew Banowitz.
Here.
Peter Yarum.
Here.
Mo LaRosa.
Here.
Mary Ann Turner. Charlie Masterbird.
Here.
Jay Keller. Ginny, I don't have it.
You got it. For the benefit of our audience, in the event of a fire, two means of egress out of the chambers. To my left, to your right, the pair of doors. Immediate left, down the stairs, out into the parking lot, or to the rear of the building, pair of doors. Onto a landing, down the stairs, out onto the town green. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under that individual with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight's order of business, we do have three hearings that were continued from last month, and we do have one new one. So for the benefit of the audience, just a quick summary on how we'll conduct the business. For the three hearings that are carried over, one of those public hearings is closed, which is ZBA 2013-10-01. Therefore, there will be no communication between the board and the public. For the other two that are carryover, those were not closed, and therefore, there will be communication. For the new business tonight, that public hearing also has not been closed, therefore, there will be communication with that applicant. So the secretary will read the legal notice. If your public hearing is still open, you'll ask to come before the board. Please state your name and address for the record. If you have an opportunity to present your application, the board may or may not ask questions. The audience will be given an opportunity to speak in favor or against your application. If the audience does speak, then the applicant will have an opportunity to have final say. Information that you may have, that may have not been presented to us at this time, can only be given to us while your public hearing is open. Once the public hearing is closed, we will not accept any information or any communication. Comments made by the public that are not relevant to the exercise of the commission's statutory regulatory authority will not be considered by the commission in reaching its decision. Once your application's been presented, most likely, we're going to vote on it tonight, so you'll have an understanding of where your application stands. You will receive written confirmation from the town regardless. And for the record, a variance can be granted where such grant will not affect the overall purpose of the zoning ordinance, and where strict interpretation of the ordinance will result in a hardship. A hardship exists where the zoning ordinance uniquely affects a parcel of land differently from other properties, where use of the property, or reasonable use of land, would be impossible without the variance. Self-imposed or financial hardships cannot by law be considered as a reason for granting a variance. So, Madam Secretary, in the applications that are continued from last month's meeting, would you please read 6A?
ZBA 2013-10-01, Barbara Olson. Applicant owner, 18 Barrett Road. Map 55, Lot 86, R33 Zone. Request a variance for an additional two feet setback, nine feet from rear setback. ZEO Section 410-2H.
And once again, this public hearing is closed. We do have a motion on the floor to approve made by Mary Ann Turner and seconded by Maurice LaRosa. We are now up for discussion. Mo, you raised the question as to whether or not a variance was on the construction of the deck.
Correct. I found no variance on record of a, or permit on record for the construction of the deck.
Okay. Has staff found anything?
No, staff found nothing.
So there is no variance on the deck?
There's nothing.
Did you find a building permit on the deck?
No.
No building permit either?
No.
The reason I was looking for that was if a variance had been granted for the deck, then we realistically didn't need to re-grant a variance because the deck already comes back that far.
Uh huh.
But because there's no variance on record, and there's no building permit for the deck, I'm not really sure why we would be willing to grant the variance. Because with the deck added onto the house, it creates the hardship. In any other way, you could put the garage as a detached garage, which the applicant said they originally wanted, and you'd be able to have that if you didn't have the deck in place.
Okay.
Also, I'm not sure, I'm not an engineer, so the question was posed, could you move that forward a little bit further? Now, you may have to move some dirt around, it may cost a little bit more money, but I just think there may be other ways around this.
Any further comments?
I guess the question that I have is that if we, now, we can't grant a variance for something that's slightly illegal already, I mean, you have this deck in the back, we don't have the building permit or the variance for that, it puts us in a position. So I don't know how we move forward with one over the other.
Well, the deck, without knowing how long the deck has been there.
Right.
There is a state statute, it would only take me a minute to find it for you, but there is a state statute that says that if it's been there three years or more, then we have no regulation to it. The variance for that is, it's not a variance, but they're granted to keep it.
Right, because it's there.
If it ever came down, they would have to seek variance to fix it or put another one up.
But if we granted the variance for the garage, would that encompass the deck?
Basically, what it encompasses is you're drawing a line in the backyard.
Right.
Saying, this is the point now that we're going to allow you to build two. So they could take any part of their building to that point, as long as they don't go over their coverage after that. Because the variance is there.
Excuse me, one second. You need to be careful how you word that, because it's been advertised, and they've come before you for a garage. There was no mention of the deck, other than in passing.
Right.
So they would have to pull a building permit for the deck, but you wouldn't be granting them a variance for the deck at this time unless they requested it at another date.
Correct. What she was asking was the setback variance.
Correct.
If we create a setback variance, then it creates that line in the backyard that says, okay, you can now go this close to the property line.
Correct.
And that would be a line drawn across the entire backyard.
Correct.
That's what she was asking.
But it's no reflection on the deck.
Correct.
Right. And I worded it improperly.
So, but yeah, we basically were drawing a new line in the sand.
Were there any other options to pull? We chatted briefly, or we all looked at the property about moving the garage forward, and maybe eliminating the need for a variance at all.
We did talk about that. What would the, there was discussion over whether or not it could be moved forward.
Right. The tree was discussed, and pull it forward, push it over, get rid of the two feet on one side, push it towards the house, and then there wouldn't be any reason to be here.
I recall that they had, the attachment between the house and the garage was 12 feet. If that became 10 feet, they no longer needed the side yard variance.
Right.
As far as the depth went, when I looked at the property, I was under the impression that it could be moved forward. That the garage could be moved forward.
Which would then, again.
Eliminate the rear yard setback.
Eliminate the variance. And it would stop the question.
The concern I have is not being able to find a building permit on the deck, not being able to find a variance on the deck, that to me is an issue going forward with any type of new structure.
Well, the other aspect, and this applies in a lot of what we're going to talk about tonight, is one of the things that the state gives us to look at is not taking a non-conforming property and making it more non-conforming.
True. You're right.
So, you know, we have to find a balance. But if we're already out of compliance, do we ever really want to go into that and make it more non-conforming? Bring it further out of compliance?
I really think they have other options. It may not be the scenario they want.
Yep.
They may lose the tree that's on the far side of the driveway, but they have other options.
I would suggest that that's some of the things that they figure out, because this could only gather more steam.
Well, I was just going to say that it's, they made the non-conformity and the hardship, and we would be making it worse if we did, like you guys had said, if we extend that setback line, we're going to make the property even more non-conforming than it currently is. And the reason that it's non-conforming is from a self-created.
Sentencing, no more comments?
Move to question.
I concur with Andrew.
Okay. All those in favor? All opposed? Motion is declined. Maker of the motion? Which was Mary Ann?
Thank you, panel. Just, I know, nothing matters, but the town's been charging its taxes on it since 1993, and it's in the tax assessor's office. Clearly states addition to house 1993. Just for five.
No comment, please.
We can't put the property into more non-compliance. I'm not sure how we should word this.
All right, let's just say property is not in compliance.
Right.
And there's a self-imposed hardship.
Okay, for the record, property is not in compliance due to the owner's construction of illegal deck. Therefore, owner has created a self-imposed hardship. Madam Secretary, item 6B, please.
ZBA 2013-10-02, Luke Troyer, applicant Equity One Inc., owner 10 Hazard Ave., Map 56, Lot 22, BR Zone, request variance of 29.74 square feet from 85 square feet to 114.74 square feet. Wall sign EZO Section 1030.5B, point I, point C.
For the record, this application has not been closed. It's still open for a public hearing. However, Madam Secretary, please read the highlighted areas.
From Luke Troyer, sent Wednesday, November 13th, 2013, to Higley, Virginia Higley, subject 34 Hazard Ave., Party City, Enfield, Connecticut, ZBA variance, application withdrawn. I have attached our formal withdrawal letter from our wall sign, area of variance regarding the Party City located at 34 Hazard Ave. in the Brookside Plaza Shopping Center. Letter dated 11/13/13, Virginia. This letter encapsulates our formal withdrawal from our variance request regarding the Party City located at 34 Hazard Ave., Suite 1, Enfield, Connecticut, 06082. Sincerely, Luke Troyer, zoning specialist, site enhancement services.
Since the application has been withdrawn, Madam Secretary, please read item 6C.
ZBA 2013-10-03, Maria DeRoscher, applicant Maria Network DeRoscher, owner 45 Spear Avenue, R33 Zone, request variance for lot coverage of 20% to allow for second-story backdoor and stairs. EZR Section 4.10.2H.
And this public hearing is still open. Name and address, please, for the record.
Maria DeRoscher, 45 Spear Ave., Enfield.
And if you could just pull the microphone in for us, hard-hearing folks.
Edward DeRoscher, 45 Spear.
Thank you. As a reminder to the board, the applicant is looking to put a stairwell, or a staircase, on the rear of their garage. The question was whether or not the existing garage was considered an apartment. And staff has investigated, and would you like to report on your findings?
I spoke with the building official, Jim Taylor, and he and I pulled the plans that are in the file, and it says living space. And from the note I wrote you, the building department has no issues with it as a bill, as a living area.
Okay. So, is there anything else you would like to tell us?
Do you want me to read my spiel again, or?
Is it already?
Well, we do have it from last month. If everyone recalls the discussion. Does the board have questions of the applicant?
When you moved into the house, was the house exactly the way it is right now?
Yes.
So the garage, the pool, everything was in existence?
Yes.
How long ago was that?
We bought the house in 2005.
Could you just give me a little more explanation about the stairs and how you plan? You're going to build a staircase up the back, right?
Mm-hmm.
It's not going to be covered? How are you going to handle it in the snow?
We'll just have to shovel it, and like we handled the driveway and our front steps.
Is the chair itself brought in the house?
Covered.
It's a covered?
It's covered, yes, and it folds up against the side of the stairs, and it's all covered.
And just because I'm curious, why aren't you thinking about covering the stairs? Putting a?
I just assumed that would be more lot coverage and.
We didn't think we'd be able to.
Right. I didn't think, I thought we were trying to get the minimum amount of variance possible.
You've already got the footprint. The footprint's the only thing that matters. So you could cover it, you could build a whole enclosed staircase.
I thought the only thing we need the variance for was the landing.
Yeah, but the.
The square footage of the area it's going to cover, it doesn't matter if it's a box.
Okay.
Or a cylinder. It doesn't matter what it is. It's the square footage of the area it's going to cover.
Okay.
So if it was enclosed, I mean, if you're considering enclosing it, when you go for a building permit, you need to put that on there.
Okay, well, we'll talk with our contractor.
That doesn't affect.
Okay. I'll talk with our contractor about it. Okay.
That'd be a good idea.
Well, the person, you're not the person, are you?
No.
Right. If they're having the steer machine so they can get in and out.
Right.
The concern may be a safety issue for you with snow, ice, sleet, rain, hail.
Right.
Make it better.
It would, yeah.
Something to noodle on.
Yeah, I agree with you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in favor of this application? Anyone to speak against it? One more time, in favor or against? Public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
I don't always want to be first.
Why break the routine?
I don't know, I'm struggling with this one. Because again, we have a non-conforming property that we want to bring further out of conformance. The applicant is not the one that created it. They bought the property out of conformance already.
If it would be helpful to sway you one way or the other, take into consideration ADA regulations.
Well, that's kind of what I'm looking at. You know, we have in the past granted a variance under ADA recommendations. In that fact, we don't necessarily look at the property, and the variance doesn't necessarily have to go because we found a problem with the property, but that we're creating a reasonable accommodations to entrance into a home. And I've got, oh, where's the number? Under Federal Housing Act, FHA 42, USC 3601-3631, of America's Disabilities Act is where we will find that information. And it doesn't supersede, nor does it guarantee a variance, or supersede any variances that the town has, but it does give us the authority to look for reasonable accommodations to handicapped people.
I know that we've done it in the past, and I believe that this is one of those circumstances.
Charlie?
I agree.
Yeah, I agree with that as well.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? And Mr. LaRosa?
Yes.
Reason, please.
The reason is because that particular property right now is being used to house a handicapped individual who needs accommodations to gain access into the residence.
Okay, for the record, property is occupied by an individual under ADA regulations to gain access into the residence. Madam Secretary?
You want me to keep reading here?
New business, please. Reading the legal notice?
Legal notice, Enfield Zoning Board of Appeals. Enfield Zoning Board of Appeals will hold public hearings on Monday, November 25th, 2013, at 7:30 PM in the Town Council Chambers, 820 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut, concerning the following. ZBA 2013-10-04, Latina Group, applicant Alliance Energy LLC, owner 100 Elm Street, Map 43, Lot 15, BR Zone, requesting a variance to allow side yard placement to erect an environmental equipment container and associated concrete pad to house a dual-phase extraction DPE system to remediate soil and groundwater to within the Connecticut Deep Remediation Standard Regulations, RSRs, ZEO Section 3.30.7A, double I, dated this 12th day of November 2013, Mary Ann Turner, Secretary.
The applicant, please come forward.
Good evening, folks.
Good evening.
Hi.
My name is Jesse Arroyo, and I represent Antea Group, who is filing on behalf of Alliance Energy. My home residence, or are you looking for the residences that we're seeking access to? 100 Elm Street. My home residence is 112 Green Street in Athol, Massachusetts.
Thank you.
Megan Taylor, also with Antea Group, on behalf of 100 Elm Street, Enfield, home residence, 11 Maple Street, Nata, Mass.
Thank you. The floor is yours.
We're looking to construct this 42-foot by approximately 12-foot structure. It's already pre-constructed remediation shed, and we're looking to put it on the side of the property. And to our knowledge, and thank you very much to Virginia Higley, by the way, for all her assistance in this process, has reviewed the document, and we're trying to place it in this location, which is a landscaped area to the west of the property, I want to say, rather, to the east of the property, rather than to the south of the property. To the south of the property, there is, there are parking areas, but there is a target that resides to the rear, and there is an access road to the target. We're currently looking to place it on the eastern side of the property in the landscaping area right now, and feel that it's not an eyesore or a problem to anything in that area. It is a commercial structure right now, and we are looking to treat the soil and groundwater as the purpose of its existence, to the Connecticut RSR regulations. There have been impacts to the property, and we're looking to try to clean it up on behalf of Alliance Energy.
Questions of the board?
When I looked at the property, there are two yellow containers that are marked, while one has placard on it that says non-hazardous, the other one's not marked, they're not controlled, one's lightly open. I'm concerned already that you've got things on the property that you haven't taken care of.
That may, those are not from the property owners, so I would have to investigate as far as whose they are, whose responsibility for them, but everything that we, that Alliance Energy has generated has been addressed and removed. We. We recently did some monitoring well installation activities out there in anticipation of the DPE system being put in place. And all of those drums and soil and associated materials were removed in conjunction. So I'm unfamiliar with what exactly you're talking about, and we'll do some further investigation as far as what's in the containers. And if they are found to be the responsibility of Alliance Energy, then they will be addressed accordingly.
Who is the occupant of the gas station?
It's...
Is it a tenant?
It is. There's an operator that's there now, and I'm... Chris Lugo is the operator's name, but the property itself is owned by Alliance Energy.
So wouldn't the responsibility still fall on the owner of the property to do something either with the tenant?
Correct.
Or directly?
That is correct. But like I said, we perform environmental activities at the property, and we have not generated it.
I understand.
So I'm not exactly sure where those things came from.
Well, help me make sure I have my bearings correct.
Okay.
When I went out to the property, it's on the east side facing the driveway going into the mall. That pad, which, if you went to that pad on the ground inside this fenced-in area that's kind of dilapidated, the fence... Were we in the right place?
Correct, yes.
Okay. There are some structures on the ground that looks like there were some kind of... If you took the caps off, you could do some kind of testing?
Oh, correct. That's the piping for the remediation system itself.
Okay, so are you... So is that...
Existing system.
There is no existing system right now.
Well, are you going to be using those cappy...
We do propose to be using...
So my question is, you would have had to go into this area. Can't miss these big yellow barrels. The place is full of junk. So if you had done some testing out there, you would have had to crawl over it like I did when I went out there today.
We have not done any testing using those existing piping. We have groundwater monitoring wells that exist throughout the property, but none specifically in that enclosed area right now.
Have you been out to the physical property and wandered around?
I have been to the physical property.
Did you mark the property with the stakes in the ground?
We have marked the property with the stakes in the ground.
Were the stakes in the ground in the yellow paint, was that yours?
That is ours.
It goes all the way out to the street?
Then that may be DigSafe markings themselves from DigSafe, but we expand upon that existing structure towards the target property, not towards the street.
Right. You're looking at the pad that's existing, and you wanted to add an additional maybe concrete pad?
Correct.
To this squared area where there was a bunch of sticks in the ground?
That is correct.
Okay, but you need to go back out and look. That is marked. Yellow paint goes all the way down and around.
That's...
That's DigSafe. That's called before you dig. I believe it's a sewer.
That's the yellow for the gas.
A gas.
And one for the CLMP, because I saw their flags.
Their CLMP, which has flagged it, and there's blue for the water. I saw those.
Okay. So I was just trying to make sure you weren't going to exceed the pad towards the north side.
We do not.
We're going towards the south side.
We're going to the south.
You're going this way. How long you plan on staying there? How long you think you'll be there?
Currently, we're proposing approximately two years for the system to operate and to recover both the groundwater and soil vapor at this point in time. It's a little bit difficult to ascertain the exact timeframe that we will be out there, but we anticipate that the amount of water and soil vapor that we will be recovering will... Approximately two years.
Will you be taking that fence down, or will you plan on enclosing this container?
We plan on enclosing the container. We would have to either remove the fence and erect a new fence, or we would expand upon the existing fence that's there, which would... Obviously, it's just a metal construction box. We would want to containerize it somehow so that there's no access from the public.
I would assume that planning and zoning, and I can only do this as an assumption, and we have to look to you, Ginny, that the fencing that they had that's put up there now has the white slats in it to kind of camouflage it even more? I'm under the assumption you're going to continue to do that?
That probably wouldn't be a problem to camouflage it and to make it the same height that the structure would be. I think it's 10 feet high, I believe, the structure, so the fencing around it...
You can only have an eight-foot fence.
What's that?
We are only allowed to have an eight-foot fence unless we grant another variance.
And you can't do that at this meeting, because it's not advertised.
Correct.
Okay, so we would put a fence around it, and then it would be eight feet high. It wouldn't cover the entire structure then?
Those kind of touches on my top ones at the moment.
Is this the smallest structure you guys are able to have? And I ask this because we have another containment system that was put in six years ago. It was only supposed to be there for two.
Right.
It's six years later. It's still there. What was it? Well, that one is, but the small one's still there.
It's still there.
They came to us for variance because they felt, thought they needed bigger. They got the variance for the bigger and then realized we don't need something this big. So what parameters are you guys using to say, "I need it this big"? And my other concern is, you guys had one there before. Maybe not you, but somebody had one there before. Then at some point, it was felt that, "Oh, we don't need it anymore." It was removed.
Correct.
Why do we need another decontamination system now? Are you addressing the problem at the same time as to why we need another one? As to what the problem is, what's causing the problem? Or are we just putting in a remediation system, we'll remove it, and then years later, we'll do another one?
To answer that question, I'm not sure where to start. Our engineers have designed this system, and they've designed this system with several components, and they're fairly large components. So the size of the treatment shed is specked out to containerize all of those pieces of equipment. To reduce the size of the treatment shed would probably mean to reduce the capacity of the equipment inside it and hence create a longer timeframe for the system to operate. So that's why the system is as large as it is. As far as the previous system that operated at the site, it was incorrectly designed, and it was designed as only a soil vapor extraction system. And it was designed only to pull vapors and not really to address the groundwater as effectively as we're trying to design it right now.
Will you... This containment shed, will it produce waste?
It will produce waste. Well, it will recover groundwater from the ground, and it will treat it. And then we're gonna file for a general discharge permit through the state as well and connect it to the sanitary sewer system.
Will you be using a charcoal system, or you will need to take the charcoal out and take it off-site?
We propose to use an air stripper, which, in effect, there are trays within the air stripper, and as water flows through it, it allows for the volatilization of the impacts in the groundwater and treats it that way. And we propose to have what you're referring to as granular activated carbon vessels as a secondary treatment option in the event that there is breakthrough after the air stripper, just as an added precaution before we get to the discharge point. So there will be two carbon canisters that'll be on-site, and we'll address them and dispose of them per the regulations if they are impacted.
I guess what I want to make sure that doesn't happen, if you have these 50-gallon drums of this material, and you have to remove it off-site.
Correct.
It is not to be, it is to be a fluid motion. You will not just take it, let it sit on-site for weeks on end, and we're kind of a nosy board. We'll come by, we'll see them, and the next thing you know, we have a problem. We want it clear on the record now that if you're gonna do something and you need to remove drums, material, that it is a fluid motion. You do it, you take it, it's gone, same day, it's done. Can we...
That will happen. Either one of two things will happen. Either they will open the top and they will vacuum out the contents of the impacted contents of it and put fresh carbon inside of those drums, or the drums themselves will physically be removed, and new drums will be put in place. And it will be a seamless transition as far as it will happen within the same day.
Right. No storage outside.
Correct.
And if, for some weird, strange reason, that you did have to store a container, even for a few hours, it must be placarded properly?
Absolutely. It would be considered at that point non-hazardous waste, but it would have stickers and labels on them accordingly.
Any other question?
What happens if we don't grant the variance?
If you don't grant the variance, there are other treatment options that are available, but they're not as all-encompassing as the remedial alternative that we're trying to do. We would either try to inject, do some sort of in-situ remedial technologies to inject something in the ground to counteract with the petroleum hydrocarbons that exist there now, but it's a much less effective remedial alternative.
Mr. Chairman, I need to ask Ginny a question.
Let me just, before I forget. Never mind. Go ahead.
Ginny, if we go, when we did the other one, okay? We grant this variance for them to do this, and then two years from now, that's the window. They take it out, they're done.
As you know, variance goes with the land.
If that's so, they've already had one. Why are we back for a second variance unless we're talking the last one wasn't as big as this?
That's what we're talking. It's a smaller one. The pad is smaller, and they need to make the pad longer and probably wider. They need to add to what's there already. You should have seen a pad there.
There was a pad, and I can see where they want to add to, but...
I think they want to go an additional 12 feet.
Right, and I think this looks...
10 by 12.
Right, and this one reminds...
What they have is 10 by, I believe, 30.
What they have now.
Yeah.
And they want to make it 42 feet? Because that would be very similar to the one that we had on the other side. It looks like a big container, like on the back of a truck. So the question... Go ahead.
Could I make a suggestion? If indeed you decide to grant the variance, you could always put a condition in that they have to come back in two years to report either way. It's finished, it's done, we're removing it, or it was really bad, lot more stuff in the ground that we didn't know about, so we're gonna need to be there longer.
We've been down that road, and it didn't work. So my recommendation is that we get a semi-annual update.
Well, that didn't work either, because you asked, not you, but Antea was for the other one as well, and they were supposed to be sending in a yearly report.
Well, if it's a condition of the approval.
That's true. That's true. Okay.
We don't get it.
And I'm sure they would be willing to do that.
We have requirements to report to the state as well under the discharge permit recommendations, so I don't necessarily see that as a problem. I'm not exactly sure if the language that you would be looking for within that report would be tailored specifically to your jurisdiction, or if that type of report that we would prepare and submit to the state anyway would be satisfactorily...
The problem was... Satisfactory. They sent us reports that they sent to the state. To us, it was Greek.
Okay.
It didn't mean a thing. We need a report that's in layman's terms. This is what we found. This is where we are. This is what we're doing.
And this is how long we'll be here? Because you may come back and tell us, two years our goal, we need two more. We're not inflexible, but we need to know what's happening.
Absolutely, and we completely understand that point of view. I'm not sure exactly what you've received in the past, but it includes the sampling methodology. It includes the laboratory analytical reports. It includes the laboratory... It includes the tables, which show visually what the laboratory analytical reports say. And you can see the... I mean, I can see it because I do this every day. So you may not be able to see it, but it's a number. If I started at 200, and the next time around I sampled it, it was at 150, we've had a 50-part-per-million reduction there. So the tables are intended to speak volumes and tell the story about what is going on. And they contain the criteria that we're trying to meet as well. So I'm trying to think of how I can craft it to be in layman's terms, but a lot of the time...
You could send us a one. Every six months, we'll noodle on something, but it could be as simple as keeping... This is where we're at. We're on target for our two-year window. It doesn't really need to be intense. It could be a couple of quick paragraphs, one-page letter that you can communicate through the planning office, and they'll just keep us informed.
That would be fine. We would be fine with those things.
I was gonna say, if you have any questions, perhaps you can... I mean, they're going to do their conditions, but if one of the conditions is that, perhaps we can go back and forth in email a few times and see if we can hit some main points that you can give them. Suggestion.
I mean, and we're flexible as well. If we provide you a type of report and you say this isn't exactly what we're looking for... I'm not trying to make it a 50-page dissertation on what we're trying to do, but I mean, we are flexible as well. If you say, "This doesn't make sense to me at all", then we can modify the language in it and give you an update about, in terms that you can potentially understand.
Okay. I want to just go back to my original thought before we get on this part of it. In your other options, what's the most effective and quickest way to remediate?
It would be the way that we're going, we're trying to attempt right now with the dual-phase extraction to address both the soil impacts and the groundwater impacts. The other remedial technology, it would entail a lot more injection activities. It would entail a lot more of the compound to be injected, a lot more quantity involved, and the effectiveness really isn't there as well.
Okay. Further questions?
I guess the only thing I'd have is that if you needed, if you were to take it out, say you were done in two years, I would just like to be notified, the board would like to be notified that you're taking it out.
Absolutely.
We've had it where they've just disappeared, and all of a sudden, we notice they're gone. You know?
Okay.
The barrels...
There wouldn't be another variance to have it removed. It's just more of a courtesy thing.
That's all I'm asking.
Just to let you guys know that we are planning to remove it.
Right.
At the same time, I'm not exactly sure if this variance is issued, if when we decide to remove this trailer, that the structure goes and the concrete pad needs to go, or can the concrete pad remain in place?
Well, you're still gonna have your wells drilled, right?
The wells are already drilled, so...
Right. We wouldn't.
We're not gonna make you tear all that up.
Okay. Well, we would, per the regulations and the state, decommission them, and we would make them so that it's not a preferential migration pathway, and nothing could get into them and hence get into the ground. So we would prevent that aspect of it as well.
We can't...
Right.
We can't say we're gonna let you keep them there. That would be a Building Department and Fire Department call, not ours.
Okay.
To say the concrete can stay there, that they may tell you, "No, you take everything out."
Okay.
That's not our call.
That's through the building department, did you say?
Through the building department or the fire department.
Okay.
I don't have anything else, Chairman.
Okay. Thank you, folks.
Thank you. Will the document, if this is granted, will it stipulate the frequency that you're looking for these, for the reports?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much for your help.
Do I submit the posting of public hearing signs?
Anyone in the audience to speak in favor of the application? Anyone to speak against it? Public hearing's closed. I have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Discussion.
I feel that it's necessary, what they have to do. But I do believe that we should have definitely put some conditions on it. I understand the need for the shed, I understand the length of the shed, I understand the time for it to be there and what they're gonna be using. But the one thing that concerns me right out of the gate is that there are two barrels that are sitting there, and they should have seen those, just doing their, just putting in the stakes in the ground. They should have noticed them. And I'm not exactly sure if we can have the barrels be taken care of before they move forward with their, if we move forward a variance, if that can be settled first, because we don't know what they are. We don't know what's in them. So, I'm not sure how we'd go about that.
I'm not sure either. I would assume that they're looking for the variance.
Right.
If the variance is granted, that's what they need from this board. Now, to go through the process, whether it's the fire department, or whether it's some department in the town that would issue the proper permits, inspect the site, I would assume.
Well, I guess I just go back to, the variance is the thing we're at the table for, but having walked on the site and seen the two big yellow barrels there without the placards on them, and I'm not gonna open them up.
Well, I know how concerned you get, so we can, if you, Ginny, you want to step in?
Will either of you be going to the site within the next day or two?
The site isn't far from here. I think we can go there today.
Perhaps on your way out, you could make arrangements with whoever you need to make arrangements with to have them removed within the next day or two? Would that be possible?
Potentially. I would need to know what's in them first, and those yellow drums may contain some sort of speedy dry or something to...
I don't...
To containerize a superficial spill, if there was one. Something like that we typically wouldn't have removed, because it's there as a precaution to prevent some sort of superficial spill. Most gasoline stations have that type of material.
Could you let me know exactly what you find, and what the result would be from what you find, so that I can pass it along to the board members, and their mind will be at better ease?
That would be...
Absolutely.
The only other thing we can do, Mr. Chairman, is we table it until we know.
I have another question.
Yes, sir.
We're here, we can grant a variance to the property, so they can pour another pad and put a building down. Does planning and zoning have to approve the type of building they're putting in? No? They don't have regulations that stipulate what fencing goes up and what building goes up, and...
This is, unless they were blocking something, or unless they were causing a hazard, it's my understanding that this is something like the ADA complacency, the state mandates through the DEEP that things be monitored to keep track of the pollutants. So, even if for some ungodly reason they didn't get it, or they had to go to PZC and didn't get it, it still would go on. I will bring it to Rachel Blatt's attention tomorrow, but I'm sure that she's going to say it's not necessary.
Well, I'm just, I know there was an issue with, there's always issues with rooftop units, making sure that they're not visible, and all these other regulations that we have. So, whereas we can't grant a variance tonight to increase the height of the fence, PZC may want to send them to see us to increase the height of the fence.
They will, I will talk to Rachel tomorrow morning when she gets in, and I will let you all know, but I think that Rachel's going to say there's no need for them to go.
Okay.
Well, that's true. She probably is gonna say there's no need for them to go in front of P and Z, but it doesn't mean that administratively she can't say, put in a 10-foot fence and cover it.
No, she can't do that.
She can't go against...
They would have to send it back to you for a 10-foot fence.
She would have to send it to them.
Right, they would need the variance.
And I think that they could live with an 8-foot fence. I could be wrong.
I'm not talking to them.
Okay.
Well, the one thing we haven't looked at, that we've really always asked of, well, we only had this come in front of us one other time, but we asked, what does the container look like? What color is it? What, we don't really have any of that information.
Don't have any of that.
Okay.
So, she would be able to have that information and determine, I mean, if it's gonna be a bright pink box, you may want to have it covered.
Point taken.
Well, I, go ahead, Charlie.
Well, I think we need to just take it on its merit. Those containers really are not part of our process, correct? That are there right now?
You mean the barrels?
The barrels, sorry.
Well, what it could have meant is I could have picked up the phone today and called the fire department, and had them out there. I knew they were coming in front of us, so, and we've been down this road before, and let me just tell you, it gets a little hairy when the fire department decides to do, bring everybody and their brother out to look at...
To find out what's in the container.
It becomes a major incident, and somebody may get billed.
Okay, but what I'm saying is, just for purposes of our variance, Ginny can handle that aspect of it, and we can still just vote on the remediation system.
Right.
Because the remediation system seems to be the best way to go for that property.
That's what, we're gonna vote on the remediation as far as the barrels go, that's now an administrative task. We're voting on the...
Correct. Period.
On the pad, the variance, and with a condition that we have a report every six months, or whatever we determine it to be.
But I do believe that Commissioner LaRosa was correct. We may be giving them a variance, but we've had this happen where they've come in with this container, and it's larger, bigger, brighter, all kinds of stuff, and that then becomes part of the variance. I think we should have had that information to understand exactly. I know where it's going, and I know why they want to put it there, but the shed does matter.
Well, also keep in mind, if they get their variance, they don't put it in tomorrow.
Right.
There's other boards and commissions they have to go through, planning and zoning being one of them.
Is that so? I don't think they're going in front of P and Z.
Why would they not have to go in front of planning and zoning?
I think that's a discussion best held at another time. I really don't feel that they will be going.
Okay.
And with that said...
With that said, then they would have to go and get their building permit. They're gonna need a permit to do the work out there.
Do they?
Did you, did you see, it says here, expand existing concrete pad...
Right.
From 10 feet by 30 feet to 10 feet by 42 feet, and house an environmental equipment remediation container. The additional 12 feet of length has been staked out. The reason that I'm reading that is, correct me if I'm wrong, but they can't bring in anything bigger than what will fit on the pad.
Think about what 42 feet looks like.
I know.
Think about where it's being staged.
Yep.
It's right outside a major mall.
Yes.
It's right on our main corridor of our town.
Yes.
The planning and zoning people would have great exception to air conditionings over on the top of a building.
Would we, this is just a thought. A variance goes with the property forever. However, PZC can issue a special use permit for a portion of a property.
That stays with the property as well.
I believe if you read the regulation, when the special use permit is no longer being used, it goes away.
It's like when you have a nonconformity, and you give up that nonconforming use, unless you put it in writing and put it in the vault, it's gonna come back again. If you look in our regulations, it actually says special use permits are only good for X amount of years. I read that to our former planner.
If...
And he said that that didn't make any difference. Special use permits are forever.
If they continue to use it, if they take the container off the property in two years, the special use permit goes away.
No.
Just like if a nonconforming property has a deck on it, and you remove your deck, you now can't put another deck on it without going to seek proper permitting. Believe if you read that regulation, that's what it states.
But that's, Mr. Chairman, we're gonna give them 42 feet of concrete pad as a variance.
90.
They clean up their water, ground, and leave, three years, two years. That's a really big piece of concrete sitting there that has a variance on it.
Well, we're giving them 12 feet. They've already got 30.
Hmm.
We're...
I'm with you.
Okay.
I found the section I was looking for, Maurice. 9.20.3 validity of a special use permit. A special permit approved by the commission shall be valid for a period of one year from the effective date of approval of such application. The commission may grant an extension of this period for an additional one year upon written request of the applicant. I'm sure if you go into the land use records and you look up any special use permit that you can think of, you will find that it's still being utilized, even though that says it's only good for a year.
Isn't, I can't go back into records and say whether or not certain things are being done right or wrong. All I can do is go by the regulation put in front of me.
Correct.
So, if the regulation states that a special use permit's good for one year, and they can get an additional year if they put it in writing.
Right.
Why do we grant a variance that goes forever, when they're saying, hey, this thing's gonna be over in two years?
And I'm looking at it.
You know, why don't we send them to PZC for a special use permit for this remediation building, and we don't have to tie up the property for eternity?
Because if you go back to the special permit criteria, it says, special use, the commission shall take into consideration public health, safety and general welfare, comfort and convenience of the public in general, and the residents of the immediate area. All of those things we're talking about this evening.
Accomplishing all that.
Okay. And may attach reasonable conditions and safeguards as a condition of the approval. And the commission shall also consider the following objectives. The extent to which the proposed use complies, and the standards used, and it gives a bunch of articles you look at. That all proposed structure, equipment, or materials shall be readily accessible for fire, police. That the proposed use shall be of such location, size, and character that in general will be in harmony with the appropriate and orderly development of the district in which it is proposed to be situated, and will not be detrimental to the orderly development of adjacent properties. We're talking about that. In addition to the above, the case, any use located indirectly adjacent to a residential district which just doesn't exist. The location and size of such use is the nature and intensity of operation involves, excuse me, I'm just running forward, access streets shall also, such as both pedestrian and vehicular traffic, to and from the use of the assembly, the person's connection, will not be hazardous or inconvenient to the residential district or conflict with normal traffic, and all that stuff is fine. The location and height of buildings, the location, nature, and height of walls and fences, and the nature and extent of the landscaping on the site, to be such that the use will not hinder or discourage the appropriate development and use of adjacent land or buildings, or impair the value thereof. And then it talks about, a special permit approved by the commission shall be valid for one year. Effective the date of, and the commission may grant an extension for an additional year upon written request. I think we have the answer.
One thing that you aren't mentioning, and I haven't heard mentioned at all, is I put in my final paragraph of staff comments, I mentioned to you that in business regional, in business zones, there's lot coverage, and in business regional, it's 66%. And if my calculations were correct, and I was hoping that, I mean, Mary Ann's very thorough, so I was hoping that she would just double-check my numbers, I thought that they might be over it, and that you would need to grant them a variance for the lot coverage.
Okay, but...
Impervious surface.
Okay, I'm with you, Ginny, but we're not off special use permit yet.
Oh, okay.
I mean, they're in front of us for a variance to add the container.
Yep.
Right, and if...
They're not looking for a variance for...
They're not looking for a variance for coverage.
No, but I...
And if, in fact, they needed something, we would know that through the special use permit. But if PZC gives them a special use permit to drop this containment system there, they don't need us to give them...
They don't need a lot coverage change.
I will take your comments back to Rachel. I really, I'm missing what you're trying to explain to me, because I can't see it as a special use permit, but I am your liaison, and I will, you know, take it back to her, if that's what you wish.
I don't see how you're missing that. Andrew, what do you got?
Well, it doesn't really fit either, so I think that's the problem. I mean, I think the variance is probably closer, but for the fact that it goes on forever. But then, I mean, you have other considerations, too. What kind of structure would you be building there in that variance area later?
It could be a lot of things. You don't know.
Right.
It's gonna be 42 feet by, what is it, 12? They could move all the, I mean, it's kind of sort of a convenience store, but who knows it'll be in the future. And I'm not looking for it to be a problem, but remember where we are. They just tore two buildings down to build a new one.
Well, I guess what I'm saying is, why couldn't we condition the variance to be for the use of that?
Yeah.
I think that, I believe you said you can't.
Just a thought. If the concern of the board is that it could be utilized again, perhaps, they said that they do whatever they do to the tanks to close them off, but perhaps the cement should go away, and then it's totally gone. What you granted the variance for is totally gone.
But the variance doesn't go away.
Well, you're granting the variance for the cement pad, correct?
But then they can repour a cement pad. It doesn't make a difference.
It's 12 by 42 feet long.
If I tell you can pour a cement pad here today, and you rip it up tomorrow, you can pour another one the day after. I've said, I've said from now till the day the earth ends, you get to have a cement pad here. It makes no difference.
And I think the only reason I want to be sure we're discussing it fully is that our planning and zoning department has been very good, the commission itself, of being sure that we aesthetically please in those areas. And if this was the container that was put up previously, it was an eyesore. The only difference was, it was behind the buildings, and it was behind another company's side yard. This is gonna be different.
Well, again, you make the decision, but perhaps you, as I think it was Andrew suggested, maybe you want to table it and get feedback... suggested, maybe you want to table it and get feedback from Rachel about the planning and zoning commission, whether they would take it as a special use permit and get, and if indeed it's a special use permit, then, you know, that's it. But if not, and they come back, they would have to come back with actual, you know, pictures and documents. Just a suggestion.
Up to the board.
Make a motion to table.
Table it and get information from PZC on whether or not we could shoot this to them for a special use permit.
And I want to make sure we add that the barrels must be removed or taken care of tomorrow. We need second.
Is there a second? Before we do that, in case it gets kicked back to us, then we can look at plans of what they're actually putting on the pad?
We can't ask that. Staff can go forward. She knows what the board's looking for. Our communication with the applicant is done. So staff realizes what we need, staff can handle it.
Okay.
So which one of us made the motion, since we said it at the same time?
You can make it.
You can make it. I'll second it.
I guess I made the motion.
Motion to table. Mary Ann seconded. All those in favor?
Okay. You want to explain to the applicant, Jenny, what happened?
Are you going to do it so we can hear you?
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't want to. I apologize.
We need to sort our minutes so that person can put it in the record.
Tabling means that you are not denied. You do not yet have a full approval. There were some questions raised as to if this is the proper board for you to be in front of. I will have that answer tomorrow or the next day. And if indeed the board is correct that you need to go to planning and zoning, then I'll put you in touch with Rachel Black. And if, after I talk to Rachel, Rachel says in her opinion, she will have to check with her chair to see if it's something that should be put on the agenda. I spoke out of turn. Once she talks to her chair and gets direction, just as I get direction from my chair, then she will tell me and I will bring it to you. Okay, so as it stands now, you're tabled, continued, so one of two things will happen. Either the planning and zoning commission will hear you for a special use permit for the container, or you will come back here for the next meeting, next month, and you, and I will give you, I will ask for certain things from you to present to the board. Okay? Sorry, it's a little extra, but they have concerns about the square and what's there. And, you know, once you leave, it's, if they grant a variance, somebody else can come along and put a big container with tires or something in it, you know? Okay, so I'm sorry, it's an extra step.
I don't know if I'm able to speak or not at this point in time, but it seems as though it's torn between whether it's this commission that approves it, whether it's the other commission that approves it.
Correct.
There's not a situation where both commissions would need to approve it, correct? It would be one or the other?
No. That would be a third case scenario. Every once in a while, the planning and zoning commission will say, "Go back to ZBA, get the variance for this and then come to us for your approval." Or they will say, "Our approval is based on the fact that zoning board of appeals will meet with you again and do thus and so." But I can't speak for the boards because, you know, I'm the liaison and I just get as much, I'm an information gatherer.
I'm just trying to, it seems as though that the PNZ board, I don't know if you guys talk together or if that's just you're the liaison that communicates the information that's we.
Why don't you give me a call tomorrow? Okay? Rather than stop me, you're welcome to stop in, but give me a call or send me an email and we'll go into it a little better. Okay? Thank you for your patience.
We have a contact we would forward any drawn information.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda, approval minutes. We have not received our minutes. Therefore, is a motion to table approval. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
I would like to know when we're going to get them.
I.
Leave your signs up, okay? You know, your publicary signs.
Five days until last.
I'm not at liberty to discuss everything, but I will have a response to you at our next meeting and let you know what is going on with the minutes. Item 10, correspondence, staff report.
About, the only thing that I had. I've been wearing many hats, as you know, and I've supporting three boards now. But I did want to mention, Mary Ann had brought to my attention the bank sign. And Rich Metcalf is the gentleman who's supposed to be doing sign enforcement, you know, sending the letters out and doing that. And I've had several conversations with him and he has other things he has to do, too. So, you know, he has a list of priorities and I'm trying to move it up, but his approach to enforcement is a little different than my approach. So they're not going out as speedily. Not to say mine is, my approach is better than his, I'm just saying that his approach is a little different than mine is. I'll give you an example of the, I had received several calls about the ZNUTIC sign. That's not an allowed sign. You cannot have a sign that moves, flashes, rotates, does anything like that. And I had provided a name and suggested he call, but to say to the person that, "Great conversation, but just so that we're on track, I'm going to send a notice of violation just so that if there's an issue, you know, we'll be on the same page." And that hasn't been done to my knowledge.
Well, Jenny, that was on my list.
Well, that's, I thought that was. That's why I'm jumping the gun a bit. Little history on the sign. Of course, there's no building permit because it's a state agency, but there's no zoning permit either and no sign permit, nor would there be. And that was what I was trying.
Why would there not be?
It is not an allowable sign. It was put up without a permit.
Okay, that's what you meant.
Yes. And I'm trying to impress that you don't say, "Come and talk to us." You don't say, "Come and pull a permit." You say, "This is not an allowed sign. Turn it off and when you figure out what you wanted to say permanently, come back and pull an application with us." Because you can have illuminated signs. They just can't change messages. And I'm of the impression, after a phone call that was, that came in today, that they feel they're exempt. Of course, that's third hand, so don't, you know, don't hold me to that. But I just ask for your patience in the transition because I do not do the signs anymore. I do pass information that I get along, but I have no abilities to do that anymore.
Mr. Chairman, I contacted planning and zoning regarding this sign. And we've had people come in front of us about movable, luminable signs. And we've denied them or we've encouraged them in certain ways. I would like to say through you to, a letter, a formal request needs to be put into planning and zoning, that this sign be turned off until we get it either through planning and zoning, through the proper permitting, or they come in front of ZBA and we have a discussion for a variance. But it's very clear what our zoning rules are, and I'm very concerned that we will have other signs like this because we've had them in front of us before and we are a strong board of following the same protocol over and over again. What would, I guess I'm leaning to you for what your suggestion might be.
I agree. I think we ought to take the bull by the horns and we'll take the first step. I could draft a letter out to the planning and zoning commission.
Okay.
And see what their reaction is. If you can send me an email.
So you would draft a letter directly to the commission of PNZ?
Yes.
And other than answering questions for the interim zoning enforcement officer and providing guidance as to, you know, where he might look for, in the regulations, I haven't gotten out much and I'm doing a lot of research for other people, so anything I can do for you, just let me know and I'll see what I can do.
Okay. Do we have a new CEO yet?
No.
Wait, I thought Mr. Metcalf was our CEO.
He's acting.
He's acting. He doesn't have the credentials. He is the housing authority. That's why I said he wears, you know, he has other priorities as well. And he works in community development with Peter. I mean, he sits in our area, but he's through community development. So until they hire a new zoning supervisor, hopefully they will be certified and have some actual experience, but I'm the acting zoning enforcement officer for signing building permits and liquor permits and, you know, COs and that type of thing.
Enfield Hockey. They have signs that are popping up all over town. A bunch of them have been, they've been up for almost five months. Many of them have come down, but there are still some up. There's some on Route 190 entrance, there's some over down by Elm Field Street, Elm Street. I'm asking you to get the signs removed.
I have been working on that. That's how some of them got removed.
Well, they're local. Why aren't we contacting them?
We have. It's, you're talking about the Learn to Skate? Yes. They've been up since the middle of August. And in our regulation, in the zoning regulations, it states, "Public information, public service signs are type A as of right." However, they cannot be up any longer than 30 days. And the other item, and I was going to suggest this to someone, is there should be a limit to them, I would think. I mean, you could put 50 skating signs right in a row because there's no limit to public information signs.
You need to talk to PNZ about that.
Yes.
We don't make rules.
Yes, yes. Could you please repeat the locations one more time for me?
There's two at the entrance and exit of Route 190. I believe I saw one over on the road that's by Mark Twain. No.
South Road.
South Road, with the one going this way. I'm sorry, I can't think of the name at the moment. Where the elderly live.
Raffia.
From Raffia.
No?
Yes.
Raffia?
Beach Road.
Beach, yes.
Beach, okay.
But I will keep, and I also, you know, I definitely saw one on Raffia, so I'll keep my eyes open, but.
All right. If any of you see the signs, if you wouldn't mind just sending them to me, I can send them along to, or you can email Rich Metcalf if you want. But if you send them to me, I'll make sure that they get to him with a note saying they need to come down and why.
So what was the bottom line with Sanders' sign? I saw that they cut off the end of it. It's a wiggly metal piece of thing. They cut off the end to stay within the confines of the old bank sign, but they have a permit for, and it's been approved, to put up a new sign and they haven't put it up. So what's the?
I asked Rich Metcalf because I knew the question was going to come up. He spoke with them and they now have until December 1st to put the sign up.
Okay, so I'll make a note here that at our next meeting in December, we should be seeing a new sign.
Yes. Or a memo saying why you don't see the new sign.
But is what they have up there considered an adequate sign or is it no more than a banner?
That's a kind of a gray area. They did not ask for a banner. They asked for a permanent sign and that's what resulted.
Right, but they asked for a sign with very specific requirements.
Correct.
And they got the okay to build that, but they didn't build it.
Correct.
So technically, what they put up was a banner.
Correct.
Made out of metal.
Correct.
So I would say to you, they need a permit for a banner.
Okay, I will add that to my list to talk to Rich about.
This is where. Let me ask about banners for a moment. PC Richards.
Yes.
Do they have a permit for their banner?
Yes, they do. I checked today.
I had left you a message, but don't.
Oh, I didn't get it, but I knew it was, it would be something that would be asked. I try to anticipate once in a while.
Anything else?
No. Busy, busy, but like I said, just let me know what I can help you with and I'll see what I can do.
Other business?
Is the letter that we got, is that still being tabled?
Which letter?
Kevin Dean's office?
No, I, that's under my other business.
Oh, sorry.
Other business on the board. Okay.
It's yours.
I have something.
I need to find it.
For a while now, ZBA and planning and zoning have had a difference of opinion on buffer yards. There was recently a case before the Connecticut Supreme Court in McKenzie versus the PZC of the town of Monroe.
I can't find this. Can I see it?
McKenzie won the case, which the court had said, even though it may be in the regulations of a PZC on buffer standards, a PZC cannot modify those standards. Only a ZBA can. So in our discussions about the firehouse and the issues that we were having with those four parking spaces, had we been a little quicker, we would have been in the right position. However, because this is new case law, it doesn't affect the firehouse. And because the 30-day appeal period is now over, it doesn't affect the firehouse. So going forward, only ZBA can modify the buffer, not planning and zoning, even though it's in our regulations.
So would the question be that we need to modify our regulations to incorporate this new law or this new case?
That is definitely something that needs to be done.
So I need to make a note that we need to talk to, do we need to workshop at planning and zoning?
I think we should.
We haven't done that in a while.
No.
Okay, so you want to call, you want to put a letter into planning and zoning and ask for a workshop?
I can do that.
I will send you a note.
Thank you very much. Send me a reminder. Any other business? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Second. All in favor? We are adjourned.
Does he want it to jump up?
I know he did. And that's why I emphasize, however, however.